Y'all ready? Mr. Bordelone. You had a question?
Good.
Anybody want to take over? Y'all let me know. All right, I'd like to call the Facilities Meeting Committee meeting to order and go ahead and start off with the first item on the agenda, 2.1 Architects Update on Milton Elementary Middle additions, renovations and renovations project. Mr. Bordelone.
Good evening, members of the Facilities Committee, Kyle Bordelone, Director of Planning and Facilities. First item on our agenda tonight is update on the Milton Elementary Middle addition as a renovations project. I've asked Mr. Mark Stillper with the MBSB Group to come in this evening and tell us about some of the things that he has explored about Milton Elementary Middle and with any, with no further explanation, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stillper.
Good evening. Just because you're seeing J. Wallace James in on the picture doesn't mean I'm looking at making Milton J. Wallace James, but I did want to just kind of bring that image in. We were one of the, we were the architecture firm that did this project, just to kind of give you a basis, and I'm going to use some of those examples in this presentation. We are combined with IBI, a national firm that does schools out of Houston, and combined with the local engineering firms. Where we are right now, to give you a brief synopsis, we are in the initial stages of program, programming. We are really just trying to verify a lot of the existing condition at the Milton Elementary and Middle School. There's twofold reasons, or there's two reasons for that. One is to see if there's any existing conditions that really need to be addressed as part of this project, and secondly, if there's any conditions that affect how we expand and adapt to the existing school. Our project team at this point has conducted one onsite visit and kind of walked through the school, and that included the whole project engineering team. We've also, well, and we will, during this programming phase, we will have more assessments at the site. We've also engaged, and I hate to use that word, with Tony Trammell, but we've engaged Tony Trammell to do a ridership study and traffic analysis for the project. So we feel like that's real important as this goes forward. We've met with Tony, we're even meeting with DOTD this Thursday coming up to see what opportunities we have coming off of Highway 92 in Milton, just to give you some examples of where we are with that. As we look at the school, the piece of property that there, the buildings that you presently have are basically in the white image. Highway 92 to the left, Leponay Road to the upper portion, and Edith to the right are the borders of the school. The school property that was initially, what was operational is in the white cloud. You have recently added and acquired the properties in blue, and there's one more piece that I think is presently in negotiation. That brings you to a total of 15 acres if all that's acquired. Presently, parking is about 62 cars. You probably have the need for at least 100 at the present time. Right now, that acquired property is helping with that, with some of that gravelled area. The practice fields and playgrounds are hindered tremendously by the amount of portable buildings that are in that, in the former track area. As we kind of look at, again, I'm just kind of looking at existing condition. When we look at the, the overall school square footage right now is about 85,000 square feet if I look at both permanent and portable structures. The blue area is the permanent structure of about 2/3 of the area, and then the modular buildings make up the final third. There's about a little over 30 classrooms that are a part of that modular setup. We've kind of further delineated that, breaking that down into elementary, middle school uses, all the varied uses of computer labs, PE, et cetera, just to kind of do an analysis of use. We've kind of walked, done a lot of kind of basic investigation where we're looking at the roof types that you have. You're basically 12 years into a 20-year warranty. All your roofs are in decent shape, so I think we're good there. A few pictures, representative pictures of what you have. We did notice some areas on the gym that have some minor structural issues that probably ought to be part of this project. As we further look at some of the other assessments that we did, one of them is with the American with Disabilities Act assessment. There are accessibility issues, a number of issues come up where there'd be bathrooms, hardware, ramp issues that will probably, or should probably be addressed depending on where funds go with this project. Mechanically, the existing chiller system is in good shape. There is very limited capacity to add on anything other than a very marginal expansion. The existing fan coil units are in poor to fair condition. That would be another item if funds are available we would look at. The gymnasium is not presently conditioned, and we're kind of told that that would be an item that would be on the list to be included if possible. Electrically, by code or expansion issues, there seems to be no impact that was identified. From the civil portion, all the pavement's in good shape. Sidewalks need some work. General site drainage is not good, and where we can, we need to improve that. The water and sewer coming in and out of the building is in good shape from what we can tell. The treatment plant that is out there, we're presently investigating that for its condition, its expandability and capacity. The sewer lift station, for instance, is one thing we've identified that we will have to address. So all these are items that we're trying to gather so that we have a base of knowledge before we go forward into any of the design. To kind of further look at the ridership issues, before Milton, before Highway 92 was under road construction, we understand that the ridership line used to queue back beyond the curve, about 1,200 linear feet. If I take that where we are today, it's now queuing back on Leponay, and it's about 1,000 feet. So we're kind of in that range of 1,000, 1,200 at the present capacity of 1,000 kids. The one nice thing that we're seeing too with the Leponay Road is it's a separation of the bus traffic and pedestrian, and the rider, the car rider, which is nice, and I think that's worked out and been a benefit to this, to this issue of, or the road construction. Going back to the student population is presently, presently 1,008. We are told that that would cap at 1,200, so it's about a 20% increase that's expected. Our main project goal with this addition is to eliminate all or as many of those modular buildings as we can and plan for that additional expansion if possible of that 20%. And then, secondly, address the ridership issues. We also have some existing condition upgrades that we will have to do with the cafeteria, the library, all to accommodate that larger, that larger volume. The administrative area is also suspect. As we kind of look at some of those issues and compare to J. Wallace James, but the Milton on the left to J. Wallace James on the right, and I understand that's a cafeteria, so there's a little bit of difference there, but it just kind of gives you a relative size comparison. Kind of same thing with the library and computer lab. Administrative offices, and even looking at class, classrooms where J. Wallace was just under 900, Milton, the typical built classroom, just over 800, and the modular is just over 700. Then kind of getting, where we're going to take all this information and go with this, and we've really kind of just getting on the edge of getting into this, is trying to develop various schemes of where that building placement can be. The most obvious one to us right now is where we've placed this block, but it will not be the only one that we look at. The first line in here is kind of looking at that ridership issue in the same, you know, in that same vein. If we come in off of Edith, come in 1,100 feet, we've kind of taken that queue length that we had out on either Milton Avenue or Leponay, and we've brought it internal to your site. So that's kind of some of the thought process that we're going to try to blend the building and that access, internal access together. We'll explore other options, one of them being along the Cooley Edge that would run out to Leponay. And again, there'll be multiple schemes of this that we're going to get into really quickly. Depending on budget, we're going to blend, you know, we're going to blend these together and see where we can go. To give you an idea, that blue area is about 50,000 square feet. Whether that's single-story, multi-story, we're still up in the air with a lot of those decisions. Overall timeline, our program phase goes to the end of April. What we're shooting for is by the, right before Thanksgiving to be done with construction documents, bidding it right before the, right before the Christmas holiday, and be able to start in the beginning of 2017. That would run through into the early part of 2018, allowing for furniture, punch list, all that at the end, and be able to open up for the 2018 fall semester. There's some shaded areas in between there in the summer months that we anticipate we're going to have to work internally in the existing school and take care of a lot of that area when the kids are not in school. And another component to this is if we can get that ridership lane figured out early enough, we may separate that contract out and try to do that as quickly as possible. So that's kind of where we are. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to entertain.
I have some questions.
You got any questions?
Morrison.
Okay. Dr. Aguilar, when did we initially vote on this project? Was it, do you, do you remember at all?
So Mr. Gadri said approved by the board November 4th.
The list of projects. This wasn't done in last May?
We, we presented it as an information item in early September, and then in, in November, we came back with it for the board to actually vote on it.
Okay. What's that? Okay, one of the things you mentioned, sir, was all of the things that needed to be done, you know, to expand capacity, including cafeteria, the library. But you, you did mention replacing as many of the Butler buildings as possible, and I get that. I guess one of my concerns is, I agree with Dr. Aguilar and the team that 1,200 is a good number. But one of the last things that I want to see us do is get to that 1,200 number and then continue to spend money on replacing Butler buildings as opposed to putting it into the school and other places. I know as just one board member, but I don't want to spend this bond capacity just to replace Butler buildings. You know, I think that, you know, we had a tax proposal. We may, we will have one again, and that's what I think that should be used for. I know we need to get rid of some of the Butler buildings. I get it, but I would hope that we can spend more focus on things that are needed. You know, I'm going to use this as, as an example, but, you know, the air conditioning in the gym, to me, would make more sense than not putting the air conditioning and, and, you know, hauling off more Butler buildings. Everyone wants to see Butler buildings off of the campus, but I would like to see it with different money as opposed to what we have here.
And listen, hearing the presentation, I think that's all going to be taken into consideration. The air conditioning for the gym, the sewer treatment upgrade. We've got, I think there's a lot of moving parts, and then it's all going to be put together in a package, and then we'll let it out for bid, and then we'll see if we can make all of the necessary improvements to Milton while we are addressing adding that 50,000 square feet of additional classroom.
Okay, and the other thing is, I realize we're not on a fast track, or we're not in the same type of process we're using for the high school, but I'm kind of wondering, the timeline seems kind of long. Is there any, what, what's the major reason for that long of a timeline?
I don't, honestly, I don't, I think it's, I don't think it's an aggressive time schedule, but I think it's a reasonable time schedule. And I think the value of money, I don't know whether you're talking on the design side or the construction side.
Start to finish.
Okay. I think to thoroughly vet the process, design time-wise, I think this is a reasonable timeframe. When you get to the construction side, we, I know we did J. Wallace James in, I want to say 12 months, which was a very accelerated process. Mistakes get made, quality suffers a little bit. If we can find room to accelerate this process at all in the process, be glad to do that.
Okay, and I think one of my last questions. You, you mentioned that if at all possible, you could separate the rider issue and maybe attack that first. Would that potentially, would that cost more going that route potentially, or, or not?
In my, in my opinion, no. I think it's a separate, kind of a separate trade contractor that you're using, and I think I don't see an issue with that being more costly, no.
Thank you.
And Mr. Hidalgo, just, I'm looking, thinking about the presentation. We are going to be making some summertime improvements to the existing facilities, such as expanding perhaps the library and the cafeteria and the administrative areas. Some of that can take place during the summer, and we can begin to utilize those refurbished areas. You know, the start of school is the ideal time to move kids into the new wing, but I think at every opportunity, once we have an improvement, we'll take advantage of that.
Right, and that was really kind of the intent, particularly in the middle of 2017, you see that shaded bar. That, I mean, that's exactly what we were looking at, what we can get accomplished right there. All right.
Sir. You had said on one of the slides, the square footage of the portable buildings. Am I correct, was it 23,000 or 28,000?
28,000.
28,000. The new addition will be 50,000?
I'm not quite sure. I don't think we've really determined that at this point. I think that's still in flux depending on where the budget falls and some of those outside conditions that we're trying to develop.
How many classroom, let's say it's 50,000. How many classrooms do you think would be housed in that, I mean, I know you have to have restroom, halls, so forth and so on.
We kind of looked, we, you're probably talking in the range of 40 classrooms, if I'm guessing.
And we have how many portable buildings? 33? So we might be able to eliminate them, Mr. Hidalgo, with seven extra. That would, I mean, that, that's where I'd like to see the money spent. I'd like to see that eliminated and maybe be a little overcapacity for classrooms. Because, I mean, some schools are built, and the day after you build it, they're at capacity. I mean, we have, we have a golden opportunity to do something in Milton right now, and... What, what's the diff, I understand, you build 50,000 square feet, one floor.
Okay.
Let's say that costs a million dollars, okay, which is going to cost more than that. If you go two-story, I mean, it doesn't double the cost, does it, or does it?
It does. No, it, it does, and it probably adds a little bit to it if I'm not mistaken, just because of the verticality of it, but it would be very similar to doubling it.
Okay, yeah, because I know when you, you build a one-floor, and I mean, you're going up one, I mean, the basics are there.
You build two floors, you're scaffolding, or you, you know, you're doing other things to get in there.
Right. I'm just wondering if, if we have the money, if it wouldn't be, you know, smart to go?
The land base on this school is so tight that, yeah, if we could do two-story, it's definitely something we're looking at.
I'd love to see it open with empty classrooms. The way that area is growing, I mean, by the time you finish, it could be, it could be a capacity over.
Right.
Easy.
Yeah, because looking back even, you know, kind of looked at the CSRS study, and there weren't many portable classrooms in that study at that point. And I mean, you've really exploded in the last couple of years with portable classrooms out there, so.
My question is, do we have a set amount of money that we're going to spend on this project? Or we haven't determined that yet? And if we do, what is that number?
Yeah, Will, Ms. Morrison, if, it's the, let's see here, I believe it's the next.
So we're showing 15.67 million dollars.
And we will be discussing that in, in a future agenda item, tonight, tonight. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Any further questions, comments? Anyone? No, but you can come to the microphone. I guess we'll ask that next. Hey, Ms. Ella.
Hello. Given the rezoning that will be taking place, have y'all got any information to say that if y'all would expand 50,000 square foot, square feet, would that even be enough, given the growth in the, the community and stuff? Have y'all gotten any numbers back on that before y'all start signing off on doing this?
Yeah, we don't have any numbers back, but we can have all the numbers we want. We're landlocked, there's only so much that we can do on that property. And so, you know, it's, it's, you said the magic word, it's going to be a matter of rezoning. Thank you. Yes.
There currently, there are currently 33 portable classrooms with an expansion to 1,200 kids. That would be about approximately nine more classrooms, which would give us 42 classrooms. And 1,200 kids is really, in my opinion, would be your max that you would want to go. It, it becomes hard to manage. You start getting into high school range if you get any bigger.
Ms. Beadle, you may, you may not be able to answer this, but I guess what I'm getting at is to take every one of those portable buildings off of that campus and replace it with bricks and mortar. I mean, do you believe that that's within the scope of our budget?
Well, it may or may not be. It just, it depends upon what kind of construction we go with. If we're doing two floors, we could process anything above 50,000 square feet. According to research, if you use tilt wall construction, that's, that's most advantageous. Anything below that, no, it's not. So that's what the research is saying. I am no contractor by any means, but that's just what I've read.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Want action? No action?
No action.
Okay.
Just receive the report.
Okay. Next item, 2.2 Approval of Guaranteed Maximum Price for the New High School Project. Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Bordelone?
Yeah.
Mr. Crozier?
Good evening again, members of the board. Within the attachments that are in the agenda item are the contractor's guaranteed maximum price and the architect's, the design architect's letter of recommendation, and the milestone dates that the contractor has put together. Before we get into that, however, I would like the design architect, Mr. Eric Crozier, to give us a short presentation on how much work they've done up to this point, which has been pretty massive, because we've been involved numerous, numerous, numerous times in meetings and other things with them to get to this point. So what he's going to give tonight is a high-level overview of the whole process up to this point. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Eric.
Thanks, Kyle. Members of the board, Eric Crozier, Abel Crozier Davis, architects. Good evening. Let's see, we can advance with this. I'd like to just give you an update of where we are. The drawings on the table are our design development set of drawings. Those are architectural, structural, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, fire protection, food service. The acoustical security and technology drawings will be done during the construction documents phase. I just want to go through a little bit of the process that we went through. The focus of the process was to be extremely collaborative with the community. You know, we want buy-in from the community members, direct integration with representative personnel. Essentially, we, Kyle and I were connected at the hip for, and still are. Dr. Aguilar was very involved, as well as all of the staff for LPSS. They did the best they could. I think you have a lot to be proud of. Direct-driven process, or driven process resulting in rapid results. And our decisions were based around 21st century design guiding our decisions. So that was some of the higher-level ideas. This is a idea of what we've done in the past, what has happened in the past, just kind of a recap. Middle of July is when the design team was selected. We had a two-week charrette process, last couple of weeks of August, and that's also when we began schematic design. Very beginning of September is when the CMR method was approved, and then it was about mid-November is when the CMR was then selected after that approval process. Inside, and at the same time, we were working on site survey and geotechnical reports coming in. So we had other departmental meetings, end of October, November. We had design development approval beginning in November. And design development is essentially, well, design development's end of March, we began in November. That's where we are now. That's the phase that's on the table. That's the phase that we're going to move into construction documents pending approval with the, with the CMR's order magnitude numbers. More departmental meetings in December, mid-December. We did receive Lamoine's first numbers end of December, beginning of January. We had an evaluation process there. Will can talk a little bit more about that. And then, of course, we've been working with them the last six weeks, pretty much every day, trying to identify as many items as we could in this building, anywhere from the site work and how things are drained to, we even talked about toilet partitions. We've talked about roofing, we've talked about soap dispensers. I mean, we've talked about everything that we could think of. All the code items, we've talked about, we think we're in pretty good shape there. We're looking at mid to late April for a structural package, and this just kind of gives you an idea of the pace that we're going to go. If you look, our drawings aren't going to be completed till the end of July, but site and structural packages due 100% mid to late April, okay? Which means we're going to, we're moving dirt in May. Okay, we're procuring and ordering structural steel, probably May, June, somewhere in there. So, you know, before we're done with the drawings, we're already procuring materials. They're being delivered. Steel might hit the ground about the same time we're done with drawings, essentially. Final pricing from Lamoine would be after we finish our, our drawings, so we can get some price validation there with Will. Will's going to talk a little bit more about the construction schedule, but essentially, end of July 2017 for Phase 1, and then December of 2017 deliver the remaining parts of the school. This is just a composite schedule, so you can kind of see where July 2015, where we started, we're moving through the rest of 2015. We're going to move through 2016 and basically bump the edge of 2018 before we're done. This will kind of give you an idea of where we are on the site right now. The site is about 93 acres. The plan right now is currently 256,874. We've got all the parking we need. Youngsville doesn't necessarily have parking requirements, which is beneficial. You know, we're putting the parking that we felt like we need. We've got plenty of parking to add when the future additions come in. Bus route will be this loop over on the left-hand side. That bus loop does not interact with vehicular traffic, smaller traffic. Everybody else will be asked to exit out onto Almanaster, and from there over to South La Riviera. I've been practicing, Jeremy. So the site's coming along quite well. First floor plan, 158,544 currently. Just quickly, working from right to left, the gym's PE are the... Just quickly, working from right to left, the gyms, PE are the, I don't know, seafoam green. Okay, on, on the way to the right. The classrooms are the lighter ochre color. Green is the library. And of course, the library and the collaborative spaces are extension, the collaborative spaces are extensions of the library as well as the classroom. The white area, well, all the tables, that is your dining area with the cafeteria right behind it. And just to the right of the cafeteria, kind of sticking off at an angle, is your mechanical plant. That'll be back there in the rear. The gray, blue, kind of blue-gray area is your career and tech. And the kind of reddish color is our fine arts area on the first floor. Main entry for the students is in, in actually three areas. Bus riders will come in between the fine arts area and career and tech, that little hallway there on the left. The car drivers will come in through the wider corridor where the PE is at, on that side. And then, the students who are dropped off with parents come in through that exterior dining area where their seats are located out on the exterior of the, of the interior dining hall. There's a little rectangle outside of the, the yellow area is an admin source. And there's a little rectangle outside of there that's your secure vestibule. So, as the students come in, when, when, when the time comes to close that off, you know, 8 o'clock, those gates will get locked on the outside of the exterior dining. Everybody else will come in through the secure vestibule. Second floor, 51,858. Mostly, you have science labs up here as well as classrooms. The yellow is administrative area. And the blue is your mechanical, mezzanines and mechanical rooms. And the center part, third floor, 46,474. Again, classrooms, the lighter blue is computer labs up on the third floor with yet another piece of admin up there. And then, you've got the collaborative areas that are in the gray hallways in the center. Kind of gives you an overview of where we are. We do have two competition, or we have a competition gym. I'll back up. First floor, competition gym and the secondary gym is in the, is currently in the number as well as all of our career and tech. There was a point in time with career and tech, we may have had to have lost one and then black box. So, we've gotten all that in to our current budget that Lamoine has been working with. I'd like to ask if Will Lamoine could come up and give me a little, give us all a little report on where he is and answer a few questions.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having us tonight. As Eric mentioned, I'm Will Lamoine. I serve as a project executive for the Seymour team. As Eric mentioned, we've been working pretty diligently alongside the, the facilities team and Eric and his team of designers, pretty, pretty heavy since early December in delivering the first package of information relative to the pricing scenarios. Right before Christmas, I think, is when we presented the first package. So, since that time, taking that information and, and, and really feeding it back to the design team members and Kyle and his team to make decisions towards what, what options of space we wanted to look at, in addition to different configurations that we wanted to price and have priced relative to the budget, the budget that's available. So, what Eric and his team did was actually break out certain areas of, of the school and the facilities that we wanted to look at separately in terms of pricing. And, and through that feedback and through a myriad of options, we were able to develop the budget that's being presented tonight. So, with that said, we wanted to highlight a few of the milestones that we would be looking towards with the project schedule if, if approved. And the first item would be to execute the GMP contract, get that out of the way. Our, our second milestone that we know is very important, both in terms of, of, of the design and really the budget efficiency would be to get the test pile program underway. This is something that's going to tell us definitively what the deep foundations would yield in terms of size and even spacing that the engineers would then take that information back and, and complete the design. So, moving through that, we continue to work with the design team to get the civil package completed and the structural package, all with the intention of trying to mobilize and start construction, really just starting earthwork and clearing around May 1st. And then, you know, all with the intent or goal to, by the end of the year, have the structure for Phase 1 completed. As, as Eric mentioned, this would, this is intended to be a phased delivery as indicated in the initial RFP. So, our goal is to get the ninth and 10th graders to school for 2017, the fall of 2017. In order to do that, we, you know, the milestones that we've laid out here are essential. Getting the structure complete before the end of the year. Then, following up behind that with the envelope, basically drying the building in. Once we get that done, we would move more heavily towards the interior and focus on that, all of the weather-sensitive items and start installing that with the goal of having our FFNE integration, which would be, you know, furniture components, things that the school, the school is going to purchase directly. That would start getting installed with the intent of having the building or that portion of the building substantially complete by July 29th. That would give the faculty and school time to not only acclimate to the building, but get things running and, and be prepared for the students when they arrive in August. Once we've completed that and actually ongoing, going through that period, we would move towards completing the last phase of the building, career tech, the gymnasium. And, and with a plan to have that open by the end of the year, as Eric mentioned. So, these are just a few of the key milestones that we would be focused on. Obviously, we have a much broader, way more detailed schedule that we've, we've put a lot of work into and, and will continue to work on for the next, really, two months. So, here we have a graphic representation of the area, as Eric had mentioned. Focusing on this area here, if you can see the mouse there in the salmon color. This is a general parameter of, of the areas that would be turned over in Phase 1. With that said, as we evolve the design and the, and the process, we're going to be working very diligently on both the safety and site logistics plan. This is where our experience of, of working in active hospitals on the UL campus, things like that will come into play. And, and our goal will be that the site is completely safe, that all of the access points, both access and egress points for the students are, are completely safe and, and that the building is completely inhabitable, even though we're working in other phases of, of the facility. So, that, that will be a primary focus really early on over the next couple of months to get that plan right. And so, you can see there in green, the representation of the gymnasium area and the career tech portions of the building that would follow behind to be turned over in December. This next slide is, is really just meant as a representation or a comparison. As we, as we develop these budgets and, and work with our teams, design teams to, to provide the, the pricing information, we do focus solely on the, the, the work that's, that's being indicated to us. In other words, what's on the plans. We don't, we don't target a budget per se. We really look and see what, what is needed, what's being drawn. It's, it's after that, after we develop that information and even, you know, during the course of it, we start developing options. So, this sheet is just meant to give an example of, of one of the indicators that we look at. The three columns in blue represent three separate facilities that are, that are similar in nature, one of which we actually completed on UL's campus, the Student Union, completed in 2014. Morio Abrams High School in New Orleans. That was a competitively procured project that's underway right now. Actually, CSORs is one of the administrators of that. And then, Lee High School, which was completed last year, late last year, you know, in Baton Rouge. And so, you know, the intent of this is sort of, as we develop and work on our pricing, to kind of have a barometer or, or a gauge as to what the rest of the market's doing. And so, we think it's a good representation. A couple of points just, just to make about this. The, the two schools to the, to the far left, or the Student Union and, and the schools, they, they were different in nature relative to the site. We have an extremely generous site for the new high school, which is going to require quite a bit more in terms of getting it ready from a greenfield. The Student Union, Morio Abrams, and also Lee High were on existing sites, some of which involved renovation of buildings, but, but very little site work from a general standpoint. But you can see comparatively that the per-square-foot or unit price, where we're ending up at 242, is actually very competitive relative to these, these different results of schools. The next slide is representative of, of what the GMP is, 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 is being presented tonight. And the column to the far right in green is actually where, where this budget has landed with the current configuration. And, and really what we wanted to do here is just show an example of some of the work that's gone into this process. I think all in all, we've, we've, we've developed budgets for seven different scenarios. Within those seven scenarios, we had some 22 to 38 additional pricing options that were available for review as well. So, quite a bit of work. The team has worked really hard, a lot of communication back and forth, late into the night emails, calls, just to, to get this right and really hone in on what was the most efficient use of all building materials. As Eric said, we, we all pushed the envelope in terms of code, but, but getting, you know, what's going to really be a world-class facility for these students and for the school system. And as you can see there, again, representing the 62 million 308 budget. So, we, we wanted to talk a little bit about what the next steps would be in terms of moving this process along. Obviously, as we mentioned, the, to execute the contract. But one of the other things that we're going to do and that we committed to is we were selected for this as a partnering process. And this would be where we bring all the stakeholders, key stakeholders, together and, and refocus on the task at hand going forward, not just the design responsibility and the feedback that we provide, but also what's going to be expected of all the key stakeholders as we move into construction. When we do that, we'll sort of leave with, with a, sort of a charter or an agreement between all of the parties with three or four primary expectations that we're going to monitor throughout the whole process. Every month, we'll take a survey and just kind of see how each team is doing relative to the other. And that way, you know, if we are developing some issues where one team member may not be meeting the expectation of the other, we can quickly adapt to that and fix it. Next thing, as I said, we'll develop the test pile program, get that underway. That's going to be a really key port, the safety and site logistics. And we're going to finalize our, and implement our phased procurement plan. This will be where we, we, we deliver the packages out to the public for pricing. And that will be in a phased situation, probably at least four major packages. The first of which will be to get the site work and utilities out for bid and procured very quickly so that we can start on that. And then, we'll follow behind that with the structural and foundation plan. And then, you know, once we get that underway, we'll, we'll mobilize and start work and get this thing built quick. Throughout that process, as Eric said, we'll, we'll be working, I think, into July, right? With the design assist, providing feedback on, on what's the best way to, to finish up the documents. I think that's it. Any, any questions about what I kind of reviewed?
Of the bids. They always go back to Kyle or they come back to us? Or what part of it comes to us? You decide which vendor or it comes to us? How does that work?
I, I can answer that. It's part of the, the Seymour process and within the agreement is, we will meet with, with Kyle and the design team to vet the bids and, and make the selection. And we do have to seek approval in writing for that. But as far as I know, it does not go back to the board.
I'm going to try to answer that in, in a different way. When we sign this price, a guaranteed maximum price with the Lamoine Company, it is that. It is a guaranteed maximum price. As you heard, they are still working on pricing, okay? So, they are still getting pricing from various contractors, subcontractors, suppliers. So, there is an opportunity that if they can bring this project in a little bit lower than the guaranteed max, there's a possibility we can get it for a little bit less expensive. That's, that's how this process works as opposed to the normal bid process where documents are completed, put out for bid, you lock someone in at a price, you sign the contract and go, and that's where it is. So, it's a little different process, but it is, it, yes, ma'am.
Correct. And, and just one more, if I could jump off of Kyle's comments too. There's, there's multiple streams of contingency in this project as well. There's a, a design contingency that's in the Lamoine Company's number. That design contingency are, or is trying to anticipate the things that we haven't found yet in the drawings or the details that we have not been able to establish. So, as Lamoine continues to move forward, that design contingency goes from a contingency, potentially, and, and goes toward the project. He's got a, it's in his maximum price already. It's in, it's in the 62 million. He also has a, a construction contingency. So, there's two of them in Will's, in, in the Lamoine Company's current number. Then, you also have an owner's contingency that is outside of the construction number that is within the bond's $73 million max. So, you know, we've got a couple of areas there that we can utilize if need be. So, that's, and I, I think in total right now, it's 8%? I think maybe eight, nine percent?
In aggregate.
In aggregate between all of them. So, you know, there's, there's funds there to be cautious as we're moving through this process, so.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the GMP.
I'll second.
For the new high school.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Whenever you're ready, ma'am, we'll call for the vote. She's the boss. It is.
Three, four, none against.
Motion carries. Gentlemen, thank you all very much. Don't leave yet, but thank you all very much for the hard work and, and for being here tonight to explain this to us. Agenda item 2.3, revised project listing for 126 million of bond issuances. What's the problem?
No problem. I just wanted to invite you that if you wanted to look at the drawings that are currently available for viewing, you're certainly welcome to. The architect brought those tonight.
I'll look through each one of those pages.
You want to take those home? We can help you load those if you'd like.
No, thank you. Thank you. Trust factor. Revised project listing for 126 million of bond issuances. Dr. Aguilar, Mr. Boardlaw, Mr. Guidry.
The attachment we have for this particular agenda item takes us from the original... The attachment we have for this particular agenda item takes us from the original project listing that was approved by the board back on November fourth of two thousand and fifteen to current date. The original project listing, of course, was based on some very preliminary estimates with regards to the high school, we're much further along in that process now, and can now revise those estimates to be more reflective of where we are. So with that said, the report is set up and reflects the projects as originally approved by the board, followed by an adjustments column, and then the column subsequent to that would be the adjusted estimated total as of today. So for the high school, if you'll note, for that particular line item, it shows the original cost, preliminary cost estimate of sixty-eight million, and that, the estimated revised cost is seventy-eight million seventy-five thousand seven hundred dollars. Proceeding further along, we have Catherine Drexel, no change there. With regards to Milton, we have a decrease in the estimate of about three-point-three million, which brings us to about fifteen-point-seven million, as being the current estimate. And for the Wingate Plantation, there's an adjustment, downward adjustment there of about six-point-eight million, leaving us with about four-point-two-five million for that particular project. So that you will see that the total of the projects remains at one-hundred-and-twenty-six million. Again, the schedule was designed to allow the committee as well as the board to see any adjustments that's made as we progress through this process. If there's a need for another revision later on, you'll see a second adjustment column. So at any point in time, we'll be able to see how we, the adjustments that are made from day one, and we expect these, because the preliminary listing is just that. The estimates are rough at best, 'cause at that point in time, the design stage of these projects haven't even begun. So it's strictly a square footage calculation just to get us in the ballpark. I ask, are there any questions with regards to the schedule?
I understand the need to revise this. With plantation going down from eleven million to four-point-two million, what are we, what are we gonna get for the four-point-two million? What are we still gonna get in that project? Does anybody have an idea?
So, Mr. Lotchel, I just wanna remind you that it was just mentioned that there's about a nine percent contingency on the, on the high school dollars. So that's five-point-six-seven million dollars potentially, plus the two million dollars we have in contingency. Add that to the four-point-two-five, we likely are going to be able to have that full plantation project. We just, right now, we're parking some money so that we take care of the first project. So we're anticipating, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to fulfill the commitment to the voters when we identify those four projects.
So, yeah, now the other part of it is, with that happening, would it delay plantation's wing opening in August of two thousand and seventeen?
We never, we never really talked about staging the plantation. It was always assumed on my part that it would be the last project to be constructed.
I just saw it here that it said new wing, August two thousand and seventeen, but I think you're probably looking at...
That was some of the early conversation.
You're probably looking at two thousand and eighteen or so, maybe later.
I mean, according to the gentleman earlier, the Milton project, which is ahead of this one, is not until the fall of eighteen, so...
And we haven't even begun work on Catherine Drexel.
Right.
It's okay, I'm good.
I did wanna ask regarding, I'm sorry, Mr. Lotchel, you done? Catherine Drexel, what is the enrollment right now?
It's right at five-fifty. We were going to build it for seven-fifty, was the plan. Yes.
But we're adding fifth grade there, right?
We would be, yes.
And taking it away from...
Brusard Middle.
Brusard Middle.
Yes.
In order to...
That's, that's gonna be part of the plan, yes.
Right, in order to prepare for the growth from middle school.
You're correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Comments, concerns, motions?
I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we rescind the previous project listing and recommend that the full board approve the revised project list.
Twelve hundred. And I'll be it.
I'll be it.
Three, four, none against.
Motion carries. With no other items on the agenda, we'll declare this meeting adjourned.